I'll call this meeting of the Cedar Falls City Council to order. May I have the roll call, Madam Clerk?
Miller?
Here.
DeBoer?
Here.
Cruz?
Where'd he go?
Harding?
Here.
Dara?
Here.
Sires?
Here.
Dunn?
Here.
Councilmember Cruz, absent, Mr. Mayor?
Aye.
Mayor pro temp, sorry.
First action item is approval of the minutes of the October 19th council meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
A second? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Very good. Are there any agenda revisions, Madam Clerk?
I have no agenda revisions. Mr. Mayor?
The first order of business then is a public hearing to consider entering into a proposed amendment and restated agreement for private development with Strickler Properties, L.C. I need a motion to receive and file proof of publication.
Motion to receive and file proof.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Are there any written communications, Madam Clerk?
I have no written communications on file.
Thank you. I think we'll get an update on this proposal from Shane Graham. Is that right? There he is, Shane.
Yes. Yes, thank you, Mr. Derek. Back in August of 2019, so just a little over a year ago, city council approved an agreement with Strickler Properties, L.C., to build the new 6,000 square foot office building out in the West Viking Road Industrial Park. Since that time, the developer has hired the contractor, and the contractor started putting the information together for the building permit, and they recently obtained the building permit. However, the cost of the building has gone up significantly since the approval of the original agreement back in August of 2019. They did pull a building permit for $1.1 million. So what they're asking is to revise the development agreement. If councilor members back in that original agreement, it did not include any tax incentive. It was just the land incentive, because typically the city policy is for anything with a building valuation less than $1 million, there's no tax incentive involved. Because of that increase in building value to the $1.1 million, typically we would offer then a three-year tax incentive at 45% over the three-year period. So that is what the developer is asking, asking the city to amend that agreement to, one, increase that minimum assessment to the $1.1 million for the building valuation, and then also then to include a three-year tax rebate, 45% over that three years. So that's pretty consistent with what the city has offered in the past, and so staff would recommend approval of that.
Thank you, Shane. Are there any comments or questions from the council? Any comments from the public?
Yes, we have number ending in 1361.
Okay. Individual number ending in 1361. Name and address, please, and what's your concern?
Yeah, Jim Skane, 2215 Clay Street. And on this particular, on this particular item, I really am concerned that there is, again, a providing a tax incentive, in this case it's not 45% instead of 100%, and before, when it was valued at $900,000, it did not get any tax break. And just because they upped the value to 1.1 million, now they get this tax break. And I really object to the fact that these companies are being given breaks that the public can never get. And it just doesn't make any sense that they were willing to accept no tax incentive when it was $900,000, but now they're not willing to accept that absence of a tax incentive. So I know that there is a great deal of support for that particular process, but I think that it's wrong. And I think that in this particular case, the company would have built its warehouse even though there was no tax incentive. So I would hope that the council would reject...
Thanks for your comments. Thanks for your comments. Any comments or further discussion from the council?
We can't comment.
Oh, sorry. My bad. Can't talk yet. Give me some time here. I have any other individuals calling in? Okay. I'll turn it back to the council now and seek a motion. Oh, close the public hearing. Got it. The public hearing is now closed, and I'll turn it back to the council. I'll get this. Any comments or discussion on part this? Susan?
I just want to point out that he was wrong on the numbers. It was not 900,000, it was 640.
Okay.
We need to make a motion for the resolution.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Now, any other discussion?
Could we get the numbers that they were evaluated at first, and then, and then kind of a little bit of the backstory of why they upped the numbers? Was it an expansion? I know, just wanted to get a little clarification.
I can, I can start to address that, but Mr. Fred Rose is on the line. He's the contractor for the project. He might be able to give a little more insight as to why the costs went up, but you're right, the original agreement was for $640,000, and that was just based off of the general estimate that the developer had at that time after the agreement was approved. Then the developer started moving forward with actual getting the cost of materials and starting to actually get the final numbers. That's when the numbers kind of came up. Again, Mr. Rose, if he wants to step in and explain a little bit more as to why the costs increased, but I don't think, there is no expansion over what was approved originally. I think the building size is staying the same. I just think the overall estimate of the building materials had gone up since the original time that the agreement was approved.
I believe he wants to speak. If he is number ending 6100.
Yes.
Hello, this is Fred Rose.
Yes, Fred, go ahead. Thank you.
I live at 201, Philly, New York State. And the reason for the cost change is basically developers and contractor. I end up being approached through the builder, and it took about six months to price and finish the design, because they went to a different architect as well. And basically, the late cost is over $1.1 million a bit now. So the number before did not come from me. They didn't make huge changes in the building. All I can tell you is it cost what it cost, and those are my numbers.
Thank you. We had a little trouble, I had a little trouble hearing. Shane, you? Did you get that? Could you hear what he was saying? I had a difficult time hearing it. Did the rest of you?
I did.
I could hear it.
Yeah, I'm here again.
We had a hard, I had a bad connection. Could you try that again? Fred, sorry.
I'd be happy to repeat. Can't you hear me well enough?
This is better, yes.
Okay. In essence, I was brought in as the second builder to price things, and when we got all through the final design, the owner, Mr. Strickler, changed architects as well, so went through a whole redesign within the shell, but when we got done adding up what it cost, those are the numbers. I don't know where the other numbers came from. I can't comment one way or the other. I just know this is the real cost of doing the building.
That was much better, thank you.
The, the real cost is 1.1 million is what he's saying?
Yes, that, that is what I'm saying, is pitch over that now, because a couple things have been added since I pulled the permit, but yes, that is, plus the mitigation of the land, there's about $50,000 in soil mitigation. But yes, those are the real numbers. They don't want to see my contract, you can see it.
Okay, any other questions or comments? I'll close the hearing, and is there, we need to make a motion to resolution approving and authorizing?
We've got that.
We've done it? I'm sorry.
We're ready for a roll call.
Okay. The other issue this evening is we can't, we're having technical difficulties, and we're going to have to do a roll call vote as opposed to our machine here. So Madam, you'll read the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Harding?
Aye.
Dara?
Aye.
Sires?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
DeBoer?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, moving on to old business. Pass ordinance 2971 granting a partial property tax exemption to 015 LLC for construction of an industrial use shop, office facility at 1325 Railway upon its third and final consideration.
Motion to approve.
A motion, is there a second?
Second.
A roll call vote?
Unless there's any discussion.
Is there any other discussion? Is there public? Okay. Public comment?
1361, Jim Skane.
Mr. Skane?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, again, the concern on this one is the same as the others, that there doesn't seem to be any good reason for this particular tax break, which is for five years, and they get it into a situation where the taxes are reduced 75% the first year, and then it doesn't go up to 100% until the fifth year. And it seems to me that the companies should be asked if they would continue to operate in Cedar Falls if they didn't get the tax break. They've already gotten the land, which is worth quite a few thousand dollars, and then now the council is poised to give them this additional tax break. And I just continue to feel that money is being given to these companies when there is such a great need for city services that evidently there's no money to pay for, like having adequate fire protection. And it seems to me that in a time like this, the companies could be cooperative in giving us the whole process of cooperating and not insisting on these tax subsidies.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Yes, ma'am.
I just want to point out on 3, 4, and 5, so we don't have the same discussion all three times, that this was actually already committed by Cedar Falls with the developmental agreement.
Any other discussion? Is there a motion?
We have motions.
We have a motion.
Second.
Okay, all in favor indicate with a roll call.
Harding?
Aye.
Dara?
Aye.
Sires?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
DeBoer?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Next item is passing ordinance 2972 granting a partial property tax exemption to Jaden Properties, L.C., for construction of an industrial use manufacturing shop facility at 2800 Technology Parkway upon its third and final consideration.
Motion to approve.
And a motion and a second?
Second.
And a motion and a second? Any discussion?
1361, Jim Skane.
Mr. Skane, is there, is there anything new in your comment here?
Jim Skane, is there, is there anything new in your comment there?
Yes, there is.
Okay.
Because the comment made by Councilwoman DeBoer said that, yeah, the comment made, did say that this is a developmental agreement, but we just had earlier that it was modified in the Strickler case, and evidently developmental agreements can be modified. So if it can be modified up, it should be able to be modified down. And to argue that simply because it was part of a developmental agreement doesn't cut mustard.
We have a motion and a second. Is, are we ready to vote? All in favor of passing ordinance 2972?
Roll call. Harding?
Aye.
Dara?
Aye.
Sires?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
DeBoer?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, next item is passing ordinance 2973 granting a partial property tax exemption to Seiberg N.A. LLC for construction of an industrial use warehouse and an office facility at 2700 Capital Way upon its third and final consideration. Is a motion?
Moving pass ordinance 2973?
And a second. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor?
There's one from the public. 1361, Jim Skane.
Mr. Skane? Okay. Roll call vote?
Harding?
Aye.
Dara?
Aye.
Sires?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
DeBoer?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor?
Next item is ordinance 2974 amending Chapter 10, garbage and refuse of the Code of Ordinances relative to refuse rates upon its third and final consideration. Is there a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
A second.
There's nothing from Zoom.
Okay, seeing none. We'll have a roll call vote.
Harding?
Aye.
Dara?
Aye.
Sires?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
DeBoer?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor?
Pass ordinance 2975 amending Chapter 22 telecommunications of the Code of Ordinances relative to placement of small wireless facilities upon its second consideration.
So moved.
Is there a motion and a second?
Second.
Is there a motion and a second? Any discussion?
I see nothing in Zoom.
Seeing none. Roll call vote?
Harding?
Aye.
Dara?
Aye.
Sires?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
DeBoer?
Aye.
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to new business, consent calendar. The following items will be acted upon by voice vote on a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or public requests that that specific item be considered separately. Are there any requests for these items to be considered separately from the council? From the public?
Yes, 1361, Jim Skane.
Mr. Skane?
Yes, 1361, Jim Skane. Yeah, just on these, the one that I'm most interested in is...
Mr. Skane, are you there?
Actually, actually, I withdraw my, my concern on the consent calendar.
Okay, so, any, any discussion from?
Need a motion.
Oh, need a motion then to approve the consent?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Items on this calendar, on this, receive and file the following proclamations. Native American Heritage Month, November 2020, Veterans Day, November 11th. Receive and file resignation of Rochelle Atkins as a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Approve the following recommendations of the mayor relative to the appointment of members to boards and commissions. Dave Hartley and Amanda Lynch on Planning and Zoning Commission, their terms ending in November of 2025, and Sarah Corkery and Kelsey Schreible on the Park and Rec Commission, their terms ending June of '22. Item 11, receive and file the city council work session minutes of October 19th relative to city council organizational effectiveness. Number 12, receive and file the committee of the whole minutes of October 19th, 2020, related to e-bikes. 13, receive and file departmental monthly reports for September 2020. 14, receive and file the biannual report of the College Hill Partnership relative to fiscal year 21 self-supported municipal improvements district funds and FY 21 economic development grant. And number 15, approve the application of Anderson Acres Brewing Company, Lark Brewery, 6301 University Avenue for a Class C liquor and outdoor service license. Motion by voice vote? We have a motion already, sorry. All in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Onto the resolution calendar. Again, these, these following items will be acted upon by roll call vote on a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or the public requests that a specific, specific item be considered separately. Are there such requests on the resolution calendar from anyone on the council?
19 through 27?
19 through 27. Council or any other requests to be pulled for discussion? From the public, are there any items to be pulled for discussion?
Sorry, Jim Skane?
Yeah, I would add 18.
Okay, we'll pull 18 through 27. In the meantime, we'll go ahead and vote on the remaining items here on the resolution calendar. 16, resolution approving and adopting certain revised personnel policies. Resolution approving and authorizing... Resolution approving and authorizing execution of a service product agreement with professional office services relative to printing the city's occurrence newsletter. Resolution approving and authorizing submission, um, sorry, of the city's FY twenty, uh, annual urban renewal report. Resolution renaming Blackhawk Road as Katuski Drive from the eastern city limit to the intersection of Cedar Heights Drive. Resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an agreement for animal control services with the city of Waterloo. Resolution approving and authorizing expenditure funds for the purchase of Refuge Collection. Resolution approving and certifying the completion and accepting the work of Vith Construction Corporation for the twenty-nineteen Peter Lemindi Park renovation project. Uh, resolution approving and authorizing execution of joint funding agreement with water resource investigations with the U.S. Geological Survey relative to Cedar River Stream Gauge Station. Thirty-four, resolution of support for grant application for Blackhawk County Gaming Association relative to the downtown streetscape project phase two. Thirty-five, resolution approving and adopting of payment standards for the city's section eight rental assistance program. Thirty-six, resolution setting November sixteenth, twenty-twenty as a date for public hearing of amendments, uh, to the FY nineteen annual action plan for community development block grants and home program funding relative to the CARES Act. And thirty-seven, resolution, uh, setting November sixteenth, twenty-twenty as a date of public hearing on the proposed rezoning from C-three to R-four multiple resident district to C-three commercial district of property located in the vicinity of West Twenty-Second Street and College Street. Is there a motion to approve those items?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Uh, roll call vote.
Harding.
Aye.
Dara.
Aye.
Sires.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
DeBoer.
Aye.
Cruz.
Aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, um, item eighteen, I believe, and I'll read this before we have a discussion. It's a resolution authorizing certification of eligible expenses for reimbursement from the College Hill Downtown, Penico Prairie, South Cedar Falls, and unified tax increment financing revenues. Is there a motion to approve that?
So moved. Second.
So moved.
Okay, Mr. Skane? Your comments? Mr. Skane, are you there? Okay, we have a motion and a second, and no, Mr. Skane. So, um, roll call vote.
Mr. Mayor, can we get an update from staff as to the relevance of this, just for the public?
Sure.
No, no, I'm there.
Uh, Mr. Skane? We've, um, you have something to say? Okay, um, we'll back, we'll go back to Mark's request and have the staff give us a little information on this.
Sure, so, um, item number eighteen is actually, um, certifying the expenditures for five active TIF districts. And, um, we always have to do that by December first of every year. And so what we do this time of year is gather all the information of all the projects we've already done that fit in all those, um, urban renewal areas. And we get those prepared, and that's why you'll see the forms in your packet. Um, and those will certify with the county if those are approved by council.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? We need to vote on item number eighteen.
Harding.
Aye.
Dara.
Aye.
Sires. Dunn.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
DeBoer.
Aye.
Cruz.
Aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, um, uh, Mr. Miller, you asked, you pulled items nineteen through twenty-seven. What's your question?
Motion to approve number nineteen, I guess, to start off conversation.
Second.
Can we get an update from staff as to the background on this one?
Sure, and, um, maybe we want to talk about items nineteen through twenty-seven altogether because they all really kind of go together, but, um, so again, I had just mentioned that we do our projects that we know are in the, all of our urban renewal areas. And once we've gathered all that, kind of one of the last steps we need to do just from a legal standpoint is ensure that we actually have a debt instrument between those funds. In other words, street repair fund might have paid originally for the cost. And so now what this is doing is certifying that the TIF fund and future TIF revenues will pay that fund back. And so we have to do it by fund and by different district. That's why there's several of them. And so again, projects are already done, getting ready to certify. We just have to have that debt instrument that shows that the TIF revenues will pay these funds back.
Perfect, so I'm wondering then as well, can we vote on these in a single motion, Senator Rogers?
Yes, so, so far what's on the table is, uh, motion to approve nineteen and a second. And so with, uh, consent of majority of council, uh, council may consider items nineteen through twenty-seven if it wishes.
I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
Second.
I have a question, just for clarification of the public and for some of the stuff that I was reading. So are, are there some projects that haven't been physically completed that we can still be reimbursed for? And, uh, if so, why the time, like, why do we pull the money before it's completed?
Sure, so, um, and yeah, I should step back that a project might not be all the way completed, but we've already made all the, we've made the expenses. So we may have projects that, downtown street scape is a good example. Those might go over a three-year period, but every year we can submit expenses we've had in this year. You don't have to wait for the whole, whole project to get done. Just those expenses in that year that you've made, we can certify those.
I believe where we are procedurally, Mayor, is there's a motion and second to consider items nineteen through twenty-seven in one vote. And then we'd have to go to roll call to approve the items.
We should, we should do a public comment first.
Oh, sure.
Okay, all right. So we have the motion, uh, as Kevin said, for nineteen through twenty-seven. But we still have some public input.
Yes, we do. Jim Skane?
Mr. Skane? Want to try it again? I want it to be on the record, I don't, I'm not operating the phone here.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, okay.
I'm sorry, I can, yeah. Okay, I, I, I just had, I'm muted. My objection, uh, I just had, I'm muted. Okay, now, one of the...
Mr. Skane?
One of the things that I want to say, one of the things I want to say is that, uh, all of these items, uh, are pulled from, um, city funds. The parking fund, the local office and sales tax, uh, the street fund. And, uh, I think there's one other. And, uh, so these are not being funded outside of, uh, the, uh, budget of Cedar Falls. And it seems to me that, uh, this is, these are used, uh, in a very, uh, wrong way to take the money from these funds and then use them for, uh, capital improvement projects. And I just, uh, wanted to, you know, put that in as an objection and as a correction to what was said. The money is not coming from outside sources. The money is coming from the, uh, Cedar Falls budget.
Okay, we have a, a motion and a second.
Mayor, pretend, would you like me to just make?
Oh, sure.
Comment on that. I just want to, um, make sure everybody understands that all of these projects are in the city's budget. So when you approve the capital improvements program every year or, um, you know, through our budget process, these projects are budgeted for. And all these projects are, you know, I think, um, the parking fund was mentioned, for instance. That is true, these are for parking, um, improvements that were made in the downtown. Those are eligible expenses in our parking fund, but they're also eligible expenses in our downtown TIF district. And so, again, that's why we'll certify them in our TIF district and then pay the parking fund back.
I just might add that I don't know that we'd be triple-A rated by Moody's if we were misusing our funds, but, anyway, we have a motion and a second. Need a roll call vote.
Harding.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me, so we have to have a voice vote on considering the items all at once? And then, once we consider the items, it's a roll call?
Okay. So a voice vote on, uh, amending us to consider all nine items at the same time? So just a voice vote.
Voice vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes now. Approval of items eighteen through twenty-seven, nineteen through twenty-seven.
Harding.
Aye.
Dara.
Aye.
Sires. Dunn.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
DeBoer.
Aye.
Cruz.
Aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we'll see if I can do this one without screwing it up. Uh, allow bills and payroll for November twenty, or second?
So moved.
Second, twenty-twenty. Need a motion and a?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Harding.
Aye.
Dara.
Aye.
Sires.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
DeBoer.
Aye.
Cruz.
Aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, um, any, we're at the point where there are Cedar, or city council referrals. Are there any referrals from council members? Seeing none, uh, council updates?
Question?
Yes.
Um, we had talked about the, uh, figuring out a policy or possibly hashing out a policy. Do we, do we know when that's going to come forward to talk about with council?
Are you referring to the, uh, criteria that we would have with regard to attending public meetings?
Yes, sir.
Uh, we actually put that on goal setting. We were actually talking about having that on tonight, but with the discussion, um, and the draft, it didn't really line up, so, so we are planning on bringing that forward at goal setting.
Thank you for the update.
Thank you. Any other, Mr. Miller?
I don't know if this is going to be included in the staff update, but if we could get an update on the Dyke fire that occurred here a week ago, I would appreciate that.
Any other council, uh, that's a perfect segue into, um, staff updates. You want me to go ahead with that Dyke fire, then? Yes, please. Okay, uh, so what I think what I'll do is I'll explain a little bit of what occurred at the scene, and then I'll go back and, uh, reference a few comments that were made on a, on a video that was, uh, made. So we received a call on Friday, October sixteenth, at eleven fifty in the morning. Uh, Grundy County Dispatch contacted Blackhawk County Dispatch and said Dyke made a specific request for a ladder truck for a Dyke downtown fire. Uh, there was a two-story building on fire, uh, in Dyke. When we arrived at the scene, our fire chief, uh, Bostwick, met with the Dyke fire chief for instructions and communicated frequently throughout the fire with him. The individual in charge of that fire scene would have been the Dyke fire chief. He would relayed any instructions he had to us or us to him. And then our fire chief, uh, or our, the person in charge of, of our firefighters would relay that information onto our firefighters. So the location to, uh, position the ladder truck was selected by the Dyke fire chief with consultation from our fire chief while recognizing access points, wind direction, distance from the fire, collapse zone, overhead obstructions, which we did have some, uh, power lines and some light pole nearby, and the most effective place for fire suppression. We had two hydrants available, one to the, and, and to the block to the north. This fire was in the middle of the block, and one at the end of the block to the south. There are already fire trucks, uh, from other agencies hooked up to those hydrants. Um, so what the firefighters decided to do, that we would hook our ladder truck up uh, through another fire truck to a hydrant. Uh, when we initially, uh, raised the bucket, we didn't have water. And, and the initial move was to put the bucket at the top, see if the roof was still intact. Uh, as we were raising the bucket, we got, we, we got our water source established. Uh, water obviously became available to the bucket. Uh, within a few minutes, there was a, a breach. And there was one in the corner starting, and then there was one more towards the center. Uh, there were four to six, uh, hand lines going at that time. Um, once they started flowing water, uh, from the ladder truck, uh, you know, they immediately realized they had a water pressure problem. I, I don't know how much water Dyke has available through their hydrants, but I, I know it's not as much as we may have here in Cedar Falls. Uh, there's two nozzles on the ladder truck, uh, one was able to, um, uh, to flow water. Uh, the other one was not. We tried it momentarily, but we had to shut it down. When you have, you have fire trucks that can actually pull more water than the water lines under the ground can supply. If you were to do that, you can risk collapsing those water lines. And you can imagine the problem the city's going to have and the problem that we would have getting more water if we did that. So you have to monitor that, uh, rather closely. Uh, later on in the fire, we were able to flow water from both nozzles, um, because we shut down some landlines as time went on. But the whole entire time we were, before we even arrived there, uh, there were numerous fire departments there trying to, um, tackle that fire. Uh, it was obvious when we got there, uh, that that building was a total loss. Uh, but the mission really became to prevent that fire from spreading to the nearby, uh, buildings. And, and just as a piece of information, you know, we, uh, train routinely with that ladder truck. In fact, I asked, uh, uh, the training coordinator to put together a number of times that we trained with that ladder truck this year. And we've trained over forty-four times this year with the ladder truck. So our firefighters are very familiar with that, um, that truck, so. Now unfortunately, uh, we had an individual that made a video with many negative comments about our firefighters, and those were clearly inaccurate statements. Unfortunately, this individual really doesn't have much, uh, knowledge at a fire scene or particularly with the ladder truck. I'll give you some examples. When we first arrived at the scene, uh, the, um, fire supervisor in charge asked two individuals to get into the ladder truck and, and start, uh, start the process. Uh, then a second supervisor arrived, and that supervisor then said, hey, wait, let's flip out. I'd rather have a supervisor up there, because once you go up in that ladder truck, you want to keep it up there. You don't want to keep coming down and moving up and changing people out. Having a supervisor with a bird's eye view is, uh, to a huge advantage. Unfortunately, the comments we got from that individual were, oh, look, those other two didn't know what to do, so they had to put two more in there. And then his second comment was, it took them a few minutes to get the ladder truck moving up, was see, now they can't even figure out what they're going to do. Well, in reality, what happens is when you get into that ladder truck or that, that boom or that bucket, there's a couple of things you need to do. One is you need to hook a belt on, and then you need to strap yourself into that belt. If something were to happen and that, that ladder truck was to have a hiccup or a sudden movement, you don't want these firefighters falling out of that truck. Uh, they need to be strapped in. Secondly, they want to hook into an air line. Now, they may have their air tank or their air supply on their back, but you also want to be hooked up to an air line to the ladder truck. Your air supply on your back is only going to last, depends on your exertion level, you know, maybe fifteen, twenty minutes or so. Uh, you can't be coming down and coming up. You need to hook yourself into the air that the ladder truck has, which will last a significant amount of time. Uh, but you still want to pack in case you have a problem with the ladder truck and you need to crawl down, and there's a lot of smoke. You need to crawl down, you got air on your pack. So we're thinking about safety here, we want to make sure they're hooked up to air. Then lastly, you need to hook up your headsets. You have two in the bucket that need to put headsets on. You have one in the platform, which can also operate the ladder truck. And then you have someone at the pump panel. So all four of them have to hook their headsets up, make sure they're all operating, and then they get moving up. So it takes, it takes a little time, uh, to get going. But I might add too, that the time this was going, we still didn't have water to the truck because we had, uh, other departments hooking up our water through their trucks. It doesn't take a significant amount of time, but it does take time to get water established. So then they started, uh, moving up and, um, uh, were able to... So then they started moving up and were able to stay in that bucket the entire time without bringing it down while they sprayed water. I might add, the individual on the platform also can take control of that ladder. So if the individuals up top would, would become completely surrounded by smoke and couldn't see, and, and of course, if you can't see, you're a little afraid to move your ladder, because you, you don't want to bump into anything or cause a hazard. So the person at the bottom can take control as well, as they are really a lookout to also make sure that everything we're doing is safety. You always want to have somebody that's kind of monitoring and making sure we're safe. We also had a, we had a large group of firefighters respond to that fire. We had nineteen respond to that, that fire. And there's other criticisms about initially those Cedar Falls firefighters standing around. Well, the fire supervisor at the scene, their staging area is right there next to the ladder truck. So as we need you to replace others, or to replace air tanks, or to add a, a hand line, or do something, they can do that. So you have a staging area. And if you can imagine this four-hour fire, you need to, you need to move people in and out of positions, because they're going to get tired, and they're going to get hot, or they're going to need some water, or their air tank replaced if, if, if they're on air. So they are told to, to stage in a certain area, and that's what they staged eventually, moving to the front end of the truck. The whole time in that video, you really can't see what's going on the other side of the truck, which is you've got four or five handlines going at a time, as well. Then there's the comments when they first get the bucket up, oh, look, the one firefighter can't figure out how to flow water out of the nozzle. Well, yes, they can clearly figure out how to flow water out of the nozzle. It's really not that complicated, but we didn't have the water pressure, so that was the problem there. Until later on, as I indicated, we, we shut some of the landlines down, and we were able to get the water pressure going, and we're able to use both of those, flow water from both of those nodules, nozzles, so that worked out very well. And then there was one quite sexist comment about women, and I just want to let everybody know that women can be firefighters, and they can be very good firefighters, and we have several in our department that are female firefighters that do an excellent job. Overall, I would say that fire went very well for us. The, the ultimate goal and mission was to save the buildings next to it, and that's exactly what happened. And I would add that we've had communication with Dyke since then, and they're, they have no complaints whatsoever.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep, sorry.
I'd like to comment on that as well.
Yes.
That be okay? That was sent to me, the vi, the video in question was sent to me. I grew up on the west side of Cedar Falls, so my friends run all the way across there. And I got a call from a fella, and he says, you better get out here. He said, your guys can't put up the aerial truck. And I said, well, I can't be there for at least an hour and a half. I said, go ahead and shoot a video for me. So that's what he did. For the comments, and no, he's not a fireman, but I didn't want to edit anything, because I didn't want to say that had been edited. I wanted people to look at that and see what it was. Now, I've also met, since I did work back in oh-eight with the New Hartford Fire Department, when they got run over by the storm, so I was able to go out there last Wednesday night, and I talked with those guys. And they have a completely different story from the one you just painted for all of us. Now, all I'm trying to do, I'm not trying to diminish anyone, or say anything else. I showed the video. There it was. You said you couldn't see what was going on, on the other side. Well, what you don't know, there was actually a commercial camera there that did videotape everything that went on the other side, and also videotaped all the other things that were happening on that side of the building. I don't go into all the different rules, because I don't know them, because I'm not a firefighter, but there were many violations that all these guys talked about, and they went on and on. And some of the things about where the truck was and all that, they're, they're so different than from what I've just been told. Now, the thing I'd like to see, and the thing I always worry about, is the safety of our citizens of Cedar Falls. Now, we've got some big three-story buildings up on Walnut Street. My mom lived up there, and if those catch on fire, and we can't get a truck up there and get that boom up in the air in a few minutes, people are going to die. That's what worries me. That's why I show my video. So they've called it an experiment, and they've called it everything else. What I'd like to do, is I'd like to call into Fire Marshal's office, and I'd like to get an investigation that's impartial. They can talk to those fire departments, they can talk to you guys and get your side of it, and we'll figure out what's really going on. Because what I saw, and I should have probably, all the comments, I should have erased, but I didn't want to edit it. I wanted it to say, that's purely what it is. Any sound you hear, that's what it is. And there's another video from the other side of the truck. And my video stands that it is. I didn't record it. I didn't say those things. Some people are offended by that. But to start to worry about the words, and to be politically correct, is not what I'm after. I just want to show what we have, and I've met with the different fire departments, and the things they say aren't what I hear now. And I'm not mad at anybody. I just want to show what's really going on. And that's it. And Jeff and I, we shake hands. Like I said, we're friends, we can fight it out, that's fine. But let's call into Fire Marshal's office, show them the videos, the one from the other side of the truck, and let's find out what really happened. That's all.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, the comments regarding our public safety officers were completely out of line, unacceptable for a sitting councilperson to put on his Facebook page. Plain and simple.
Okay. Um, yeah, thank you. It's, I worry about the impact on our staff over the last two and a half weeks, in the sense that they're, they don't feel supported by City Council, and we really have to be cautious about social media posts, whether they're accurate or not. Rather than talking to the Dyke firefighters, it would have been good to talk to our firefighters. But this was a staff update, not a council debate, so, any other staff? Ms. Sheeves, did you have some updates for us?
I have two updates that I wanted to share related to the resilience plan. There's going to be a town hall virtual meeting on November tenth, from seven to eight P.M. If you want to tune into that, you can find information on the website as we get closer to that date. It will be www.cfresilience.com, and you'll have a link to be able to join the meeting. Also, College Hill, a couple of weeks ago, we had a week-long charrette event where we had several public events, and a lot of one-on-one conversations with landlords, with owners, with council members, with various groups, like the Bike Ped Committee, just did a lot of investigation with the consultant. And so that, the results of that week-long effort, and some of the images coming out of the discussions, was presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting at that meeting about two weeks ago, and that is available online for anybody to view. And also, there is a survey until November sixth, if anybody would like to participate and provide comments that way. And that website is www.ourscedarfalls.com.
Thanks for all your work on that stuff. If those focus groups are as successful as downtown, I mean, downtown study, it's money well spent, so thanks for your work. Any other staff updates? Okay. Public forum is now happening. Speakers will have one opportunity to speak up for five, up to five minutes on topics germane to city business. Is there anyone here, or on the phone, who'd like to comment? Mr. Sharp? Name and address, please.
Sharp, sixteen twenty-
Jim Skane.
Cedar Falls.
Oh.
First of all, I want to thank the council for having the chambers open again for council meetings. It's long overdue, and let's keep this going. So I'm here to discuss on when there was a council vote to approve the intersection design at Green Hill and South Main. In the October sixth, twenty-twenty Courier, it stated regarding the recent vote on the Green Hill Road and South Main Roundabout, and this is from Courier, Wardford Council member Simon Harding said he couldn't recall the council approving a roundabout as the only option, though City Administrator Ron Gaines said the council voted on March on that specific design. Then during the meeting, the staff then implied the roundabout was a done deal, that the council voted on it, and no other options could be considered. So I did some homework, and I found this in the May fifth, twenty-twenty Courier, the following information. The council approved submitting a $500,000 request to the DOT for a traffic improvement safety program. The application notes city officials proposed constructing a dual-lane roundabout at the intersection of Green Hill and South Main Street as recommended in the 2018 study. Council member Dave Sires is quoted in this article. If we go for this grant, does that lock us into having roundabouts? Chase Shraggy, Director of Public Works, responds, quote, "The quick answer is no." But then he noted that the funds are granted, they can only be used for purposes outlined in the application. Furthermore, quote, "If it was a signal, we wouldn't be eligible for the grant." Council member Mark Miller said the traffic study, quote-unquote, "sets a course for this project." Still, he added, "submitting the application is just one of the baby steps along the way to deciding how to reconstruct this intersection." City Administrator Ron Gaines pointed to the money already invested in the study and its conclusions, but acknowledged a different decision could still be made at the intersection's design. The point of no return could be when you accept a construction bid, he says in that article. So to me, it's not a done deal, despite hearing staff and council members, some council members say the contrary. Now, in regards to Mr. Gaines' comment from the October sixth Courier, that there was a March vote on this, I did look back at all the council meetings, and this is all I found about the Green Hill Main Roundabout in March. March sixteenth council meeting, the city entered a professional service agreement with Shive Hattery, which outlines the scope of services and costs for the Green Hill Main Intersection Program. Some things I found interesting in the agreement with Shive Hattery states, "The consultant shall lead a maximum of three meetings for local businesses, residents, and stakeholders. This consultant shall prepare for and conduct two presentations for the council." First one's a meeting, first meeting's a functional design update, the second meeting will be the final design update. It says there'll be a communication plan, which is to communicate with the public brief overview of the project to the surrounding property owners, businesses, and stakeholders. The consultant will prepare for and conduct three public outreach meetings. These will be in the form of an open house to best address each attendee. The first meeting will be to share the project objectives, the second one would be to share conceptual alternatives, and the third one would be to reveal final improvements. They will also provide a variety exhibits and other design information through public outreach. These will include proposed project renderings for up to two different concepts. The consultant shall also have up to four one-on-one meetings with individual property owners to address property-specific issues. They will also provide a traffic study, which includes developing a traffic model for AM and PM peak hours for the following scenarios, which is currently existing conditions, configurations for a signal and a roundabout. So my question is, was any of this done? I haven't seen any of this presented at council meetings since March, and if it wasn't done, why? These are the timelines that I found on the city website and council pages going back to the last two years. Please note that what was required to have been, above to have been done in twenty-twenty has not been done, including a council vote on the final project. In 2018, there was three public informational meetings with handoffs displaying both options, but remember, this was done under Snyder and Associates prior to the new 2020 agreement with Shive Hattery. December seventeenth, 2018, committee the whole presentation. January fifteenth, 2019, the Green Hill Corridor Study Plan was received and adopted. January twentieth, 2020, questions about the CIP. March sixteenth, 2020, Shive Hattery contract approved. May fourth, 2020, the DOT grant application approval. So again, where was this council vote done for accepting the roundabout? I looked again, clear back, and I saw nothing in the council agendas, highlighting it. The only thing on the city's website is a Green Hill Corridor Study from 2018 from Snyder and Associates. Was Shive Hattery exempt from what was required of them, with the city saying the work done by Snyder and Associates susceptible? And if it wa, if they were exempt, then why even switch from them? And again, when all, when were all the options presented by Shive Hattery since March of this year to the public and the council? And when was the council vote to approve a final design done since March? Because the council agendas don't show it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Anyone else in there?
Jim Skane.
Okay, Mr. Skane? You have five minutes.
Yes. Uh, just a second. Hello. Uh, yes, uh, I have comments about some of the topics that we discussed in particular process. What I really want to make clear is that in the Compost Fire, and in the Dyke Fire, there is no presence, and it seems to me it would be almost mandatory, to have a tanker truck. And I don't think Cedar Falls has a tanker truck, because in the Compost Fire, the water was supplied by the local company, and if there had been a tanker truck there at Dyke, then it could have dispensed its water and then gotten more from an accessible source in Dyke, and the damage would have been mitigated. And the fact, the fact that there was no attempt to determine whether anybody was in that fire is another breach of what should have been done. And the fact that it took four hours to put out a fire, and the result was that the building was burned down to the ground, is a, is another difficulty. Now, with regard to the Green Hill point, I believe Mr. Sharp has made a absolute case. A similar case was made by Penny Pop previously, and it seems like this whole process of establishing a roundabout at that particular intersection when it's totally not suited for a roundabout, and it would be much less costly just to fix it the way that the intersection at University and Round is fixed. And then if you want to go into Waterloo, the way that they fixed the busy corner at Amesboro and University, I mean, it, it's ridiculous to spend millions of dollars on a bad design. We've seen what's happened with the traffic on University and Cedar Falls. I mean, it centered all the traffic up to Rainbow, and to Green Hill, and other places. And it just seems to me that, uh, City Administrator Gaines has ulterior motive for putting so much distortion into the process. And I know that the vote that was taken at that time, that it was not for council people who objected to having just the roundabout. So I just am concerned about that, and I, I continue to be concerned by the fact that people have to, in seventy-two hours-
You have one minute, Mr. Skane.
Decide which items they want to talk about. Because once again, this whole business about everything's approved on a single vote, and this, somebody wants to have further discussion, is, again, a clear violation of the First Amendment. And the council can't say that it's not their fault, because they approve it time after time after time.
Mr. Skane?
I mean, frankly, the council doesn't do much of its work. Some people try.
I'm on mute. Mr. Skane?
Majority of the council doesn't do it.
Mr. Skane?
And-
Mr. Skane?
And-
Mr. Skane? You have five minutes.
In some cases, it even happened tonight, that Councilman-
Mr. Skane?
Tends to want to stifle comment.
Okay.
I mean, I-
Mr. Skane, I hope you see this on the tape. I've given you ample warning that your time is up. We're shutting off your phone now. Have a good evening. Uh, anyone else wishing to speak at public forum?
I don't see any.
No one else. I, I do want to thank Jackie and Julie for guiding me through this this evening, and my fellow council members' patience with my less-than-professional job this evening, but it's only five minutes after eight, so.
A quick question before we go.
Yes.
Um, is there a way that we could get staff to comment on Mr. Sharp's stuff? Is there a way that we could get staff to comment on Mr. Sharp's stuff as far as with the newer contract of Cheyve Hattery and the meetings and whatnot?
Sure, I can comment on some of that. A lot of that information, obviously, that contract came forward in the spring, around the time the pandemic began. So the traditional public meetings that we have for projects have been modified for all of our projects, for our trail projects, street projects, that a lot of them are either held virtually or by phone for public stakeholders and public informational meetings. With this specific project, we have a website that was sent out to the area residents in that area, as well as all the council members received this. It is on our website, on the Cedar Falls website, under Special Corridor Projects. You can submit, there's frequently asked questions on the site, there's a current layout of the design in which you can comment on specific areas, and then we will reach back out to those individuals to discuss those concerns with them. In the future, moving forward, depending on the outcome of the pandemic that's going on, you know, our goal is to still have public informational meetings. We have one coming up to discuss different items in regards to the sound fence as it relates to that project. So there are still meetings to come in regards to the public information.
Another question there, Mayor, if I can.
Sure.
I believe the Green Hill Corridor package was voted on by the council in January. Do I have that date right, or there was an approval process as part of the resolution package? The council approved the Green Hill Corridor as a whole? Am I accurate there?
I would have to go back and look at-
Yeah, the 2018 Green Hill Road Traffic Study was voted on in January of, I believe it was 2019.
And we don't have final design yet for that intersection. Is that accurate?
We are working on the project plans to move forward with final design.
But it is not here currently.
Correct. It won't be before you until we bring the plans and specs forward.
Exactly. Thank you.
Somebody else?
Susan, have something to say?
You had mentioned Chase, the fence, and I'd gotten a contact from some of the residents there, and they were wondering a timeline on when they might be hearing regarding the fence. Do we have that yet, or are we still working on it?
We don't have a specific date that we would like to get together with them all, but I would assume it'd be in the near future.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Could I just say one thing? I want to remind everybody tomorrow's voting day, if you didn't remember. So get out there and vote, it's very important. Vote for whichever team you want, but tomorrow's voting day. That's all.
Very good. You want to make a motion?
To vote?
No, just a second.
Motion to adjourn?
There's a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.